Welcome to the second part of this forum. And I would like to introduce all the candidates. We'll start with Mr. Oscar Garner Jr., Democrat, and Roman Grigorov, Democrat, Valerie Murray, Democrat, and Mark Untalkley, Republican, and Christopher Kolinsky, Republican. And then also on the ballot but not present are Neil Barnett, Republican, and Melissa Bosarde. She's a Republican also. And then I guess we'll start with our opening statements. And we will start with Mr. Garner, please.
Hello, my name is Oscar Garner Jr. And it would be my honor to have your support as a Bloomfield Township trustee. I'm a proud father of two wonderful sons, both Bloomfield Hills High School graduates, and also an 18-year resident of the township. I currently am honored to be a Bloomfield Township precinct delegate. I hold a bachelor's degree in business with a concentration in finance from University of Phoenix. I'm an automotive engineer, and I bring close to 30 years acknowledged with individuals from diverse backgrounds, creating processes and procedures, also auditing processes, procedures, conducting budget reviews, and overseeing multimillion-dollar budgets. These experiences have taught me the value of setting side differences, promoting togetherness, and trusting people. I will apply these same principles to the background of working with residents and board members when you elect me Bloomfield Township trustee.
Thank you. And Mr. Grigorov?
Hello, my name is Roman Grigorov, and I'm running for the position of the township trustee. I've been resident of the township for the past 20 years, and I'm running for the position to solve two specific problems. I would like to strengthen our infrastructure in the face of unnatural disasters and things like blizzards and thunderstorms. And I would also like to address the issue of rising property crime. And that's basically it. Those are my main concerns and the reason I'm running for the position.
Thank you. And Ms. Murray?
Good evening. My name is Valerie Murray. I am currently serving a four-year term of Bloomfield Township trustee. I moved to the township in the 80s. We had our three sons here. We love the community. I worked on my subdivision board. I'm a adopt-a-highway volunteer, a kitten foster. I love the community, and I wanted to give back here as well. I have a business degree from Michigan State University, which brings me some extra support and knowledge. But I've also, since I've become a trustee, I've been appointed to Preservation Bloomfield, which is out at Bowers Farm, which is a 501(c)(3) charity. And I enjoy supporting that group. And I'm also on your election commission. So I've learned about how secure and safe our elections are, and I get to see for myself. And we have two meetings prior to every election. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Untalkley?
Hi, my name is Mark Untalkley. Education-wise, I have a master's in business with a finance concentration and an undergraduate degree in engineering. I believe the role of trustee is to be a representative of the people's interests and concerns as it pertains to all decisions made by the township management. Residents elect trustees to hold the township accountable, both financially and ethically, to do what's right and proper on behalf of all residents and taxpayers. I am most concerned about the financials, and most importantly, the water and sewer rates. During the spring of 2023, I advocated for a rate reduction of approximately 8%, both in public comment and on the Better Bloomfield Township Facebook page. And per the July 22, 2024 Board Packet, it appears that my assessment was correct. I think by asking the right questions during meetings, we can lower rates.
Thank you. And Mr. Kolinsky?
Hello, my name is Chris Kolinsky. I'm a current township trustee, serving since September of 2023, filling the vacancy left by Treasurer Sostak after he was appointed treasurer following Brian Keeps' retirement. I have a bachelor's degree in finance and a minor in applied technology and business from Oakland University. I previously worked at Ernst &amp; Young, where I specialize in data analytics and process improvement. My family has values in public service, and I followed those values and became a full-time firefighter/paramedic. I was formerly the chairman of the Board of Review for the township. I was also a member of the Township's Financial Sustainability Committee. I was also formerly the treasurer of the Northville Township firefighters' local 3961. I am currently on the Retired Healthcare Trust Committee. I have experience in public safety, serving as a firefighter for over 20 years, and I have experienced negotiating union contracts. I'm going to work to ensure that the services stay exceptional here in Bloomfield Township, focusing on strategic investment in our infrastructure and working to retain the best public-sector workers available. Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes our opening statements, and we'll move on to the question-and-answer period. So we will start with Mr. Grigorov. What practice will be in place to protect the election workers?
I will need to assess the existing practices that are in place, and if the existing practices are insufficient, we can increase the police presence if necessary or make further changes if those are required.
Thank you. And Ms. Murray?
Making the election safer. Well, I know in the past, when I've been at some of the polling locations, we do have a police presence. And I know that if there's ever any issue, not only are the police just circulating, and as I've witnessed myself, but also if there was ever an issue, I was standing outside the polls recently, and there was a disturbance. And the gentleman came out and called the police. The police came out. So we have a great police presence, and I know that they are very careful to protect our workers because it's important that they not feel uncomfortable or threatened or have anybody. This was, what I witnessed recently, was mostly just kids being kids. And this is serious business with the election, and the gentleman in charge was, you know, concerned that they were not supposed to be running in and out of the precinct, and he handled it very, very well.
Thank you. And Mr. Untalkley?
I had the wonderful experience of running into Officer Tom Smiley during 2022. He was one of the plainclothes officers, and he was fantastic looking out for us. I would like to see that those types of services continue. I also think it would be great if we found a way to get some of our high school students involved, because if they know what happens in the election and the importance, and you can work at age 16 and up, it would be great to have the high school students in AP government class support our elections and come and work in the township. And it would be support civic duty and their government class. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kolinsky?
So currently, the township already does a lot of things to support and ensure election workers are safe, whether it's through plainclothes officers who are undercover or officers that are dressed in uniform to show their presence, which happens during every election. We continue to have additional staff and police officers on the road to ensure that there is adequate response if there should be an issue, making sure that we have adequate training to our election workers to ensure they know how to respond to an aggressive or intimidating factor at the polls. So these are things that the township continues to do, and I will continue to support the administration to ensure that we continue to do those things.
Thank you. And Mr. Garner?
I have not witnessed or had any issues with during voting, and I trust that the current township leadership will continue to provide the protection for the residents as they have since I've been a resident, and I trust in that. Thank you.
Thank you. To you, Ms. Murray. How does the township assist seniors who are aging in place?
So the township has, in our senior center program, they have several ways to do it. There are one or two days a week where you can have the bus driver, the shuttle bus driver through the senior center pick you up so that you can have an opportunity to get out of your home. And then, as Supervisor Walsh mentioned, they also help the seniors in the program with, for income-related, not high income, but for the seniors that are struggling. And they get certain things fixed, like if you need a broken front porch rail or you need assistance because now you're in a wheelchair and need a ramp built. There are funds available that you can apply for, and they come and they assist getting your house adjusted or, you know, for your changing situation. And we also have the Meals on Wheels that brings food into the residents that cannot get out. Thank you.
And to you, Mr. Untalkley?
Well, I think for aging in place, we need to consider tax increases as well. And when Social Security goes up 3.2% and property goes up, property taxes go up 5%, that impacts our seniors, and it makes it more difficult to age in place where they have less support from the community. I do think the township is doing a very good job at providing several services. I believe getting the information out into the seniors is, and where to find the information and how to go through it. I would like to highlight also, Ms. Murray has been very good with residents on that and getting them hooked up with the proper services, and I've seen her do that in action. So it's up to us, also as trustees, to emulate what she has done successfully.
Thank you. And Mr. Kolinsky?
So as was stated before, we offer several things currently, which includes our shuttle to help with to and from and transport for different residents, whether they have the ability to have transport or reliable transportation. We do have a partnership for Meals on Wheels. We also have several programs at the senior center, which includes our companion café. We have five-day-a-week hours compared to most other township offices that have four-day-a-week office hours. And we continue to expand service offerings based on what the township residents are asking. If they're asking for extended hours, we look at and talk about if we can make those. Those are things that we do to support our aging-in-place residents, and we'll continue to do that based on what the residents ask for and the needs of our residents.
Thank you. Mr. Garner?
Well, I continue to support the Meals on Wheels, work to continue to keep taxes low for seniors to age gracefully. Also, continue to support the Meals on Wheels program. What I would like to investigate or research is an opportunity to find water resource assistance for our seniors in the community. I know that the seniors have concerns about water rates and things of that nature, so what I'd like to instill is some form of program or initiative to work with the seniors on water resource assistance for water payments.
Thank you. And Mr. Grigorov?
Beyond what was already said, I would like to investigate the possibility of involving technology in enhancing communications and security of the senior citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. And then to you, Mr. Untalkley. With the privatization of public safety services in neighboring communities, it has resulted in increased response times. What is your position on this?
I think we have to consider first, is public safety doing a good job for our community? And they are. And we see that, and the community spoke out very loudly when we had an initiative to increase the millages for public safety in August. So I don't think that's the best way or route for us to go here in the township. And as long as we continue, the township continues to deliver that level of service, we should work with the police department and fire departments to keep improving what they're already doing so well. Thank you.
Mr. Kolinsky?
So as a firefighter, a union member, somebody who's been doing public safety for 20 years, I am adamantly against privatization of any type of public safety. I believe when you have good-quality union public safety employees, you get the best out there. The way to get the best is to have the best infrastructure, equipment, training, and pay to recruit the best public safety employees out there. We will pull from privatization companies because we will offer the best. I believe privatization, you go as a last resort because you're unable to achieve a standard that the residents want. Our residents have spoken very loudly in our strategic planning and all of our resident engagement that they do not want public safety to suffer. As somebody who believes in it, that is not on the table for me, and we will continue to work with our public safety unions to ensure that we are the standard in the metro-Detroit area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garner?
First of all, I don't think Bloomfield Township should consider privatizing these services. What I do believe should happen is continue to increase wages and benefits, offer good wages and benefits to retain good public service people and continuing that in that effort. Thank you.
Mr. Grigorov?
I would like to add that our neighbors have done us a favor by venturing in that direction and making that mistake, and there is absolutely no reason for us to repeat that mistake. We know that it doesn't work by the metrics of increased response times. There is no reason for us to emulate it here.
Ms. Murray?
Well, having lived here since 1985 and seen our police and fire in action, they are just incredible. They're the best. And I think that privatization would be a risk I would not support. When we have our millages, they're always resoundingly approved, so our residents appreciate that. That is the major thing that we do in the township is provide public safety, fire, and police. And so I completely support our force. I think we need to reconsider our contracts and make sure that we are paying them and retaining, because retention is critical also, because if we're constantly rehiring and retraining, that's a negative. But definitely not privatization. Thank you.
Thank you. And to you, Mr. Kolinsky. Should Bloomfield Township become a city? Why or why not?
So to become a city, there are multiple steps. You have to go and investments you have to do as a municipality in order to do that. Our residents continue to state they want to get the maximum value for their tax dollar. They're willing to vote taxes. They're willing to vote for SADS. They're willing to vote for millages. They want us to be good stewards of their tax dollar. We are able to do that as a township. We are able to offer services that no other township offers, and we are able to deliver those at an exceptional rate, whether that is a roads department, when we're the only township in the state that has one, or that we have one of the best fire departments in the area, or an accredited police department that is considered almost second to none in the area. We have those things as a township, and we don't need, unless the residents want, we don't need to become a city and increase taxes in order to provide the same level of service we provide now. So I do not believe the township needs to venture into the city arena. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garner?
No, I don't believe that the township should become a city. I think that we should remain as we have been. I've been a resident again for 18 years, and I've also lived in a city as well. And if I had to compare the two, I definitely would believe that we should stay a township, and that is just based on my experience over the last 50 years. Thank you.
Mr. Grigorov?
Undertaking such a drastic change requires a drastic reason for why to do it, and I do not see any valid reason for us to upgrade our township to a city because right now we have other means of generating necessary revenue, and unless those sources dry up, the very process of switching towards becoming a city will be a significant drain on the finances of the township.
Ms. Murray?
I agree. I don't believe that we should pursue becoming a city. I don't see why we would. Frankly, I have not really heard that from the residents that that is being asked for. The difference is in a township and a city, you know, is basically that we do have things like SADs, and we do have to contract our trash. And when we first moved to the township, we honestly didn't know that. We had a dirt road. And as a young homeowner, I was the one who walked with the petitions and convinced all my neighbors, who were actually all older than me, why we should go to pavement and why we should, you know, that we had to pay for it. And I had the highest premium put on my house because I'm on a corner, so it was an interesting situation to be in. But no one wants the SADs. But in terms of the differences, like in Birmingham, you're going to pay exorbitant taxes. And sure, when your street crumbles, they're going to come out and pave it for you, or they're going to come collect your leaves and your trash, and it's all included. But you're paying for that every day. You pay for it one way or another, and I love Bloomfield Township, and this is my home. This is where I'm going to stay.
Thank you. Mr. Untalkley?
I do not believe we should transition to a city structure. First of all, from a financial standpoint, in the last four years, the township has generated $15 million-plus dollars for their capital investment fund. So we definitely have the cash flow to support services. That's number one. Number two, I'm also concerned about property values. Transitioning to the city structure, tax millages will go up, and with the higher tax millages, it will impact what people can borrow to buy a home. And I don't think people want to see, our residents want to see, their home valuations drop. And that's a consideration we have to take into account as well. Thank you.
Thank you. To you, Mr. Garner. Downtown's editorial says the strategic plan is being rushed. Can you please respond?
I, since I have, I'm not a actual board member, and I'm not working in that at this moment. That would be something that I would be able to address if I'm elected, so at this moment, I'm going to pass on that question. Thank you.
Mr. Grigorov?
I really cannot comment on any specifics of it because it's such a broad statement. What do they mean by it being rushed? What were their expectations to begin with, and how did the plan fall short of those expectations? So because those specifics are not provided, I cannot give a definitive answer to that question.
Ms. Murray?
Well, I think one of the things is that Downtown Magazine has an opinion. We all have opinions, and that doesn't necessarily mean it's right or wrong. In terms of the strategic plan, as a trustee, I'm not here on a day-to-day basis. I'm not allowed to be here on a day-to-day basis, so I don't know all the ins and outs. But in general, the only thing that I have an issue with it was that the mailings could have gone out earlier because they did come kind of close to the first sessions. However, we were getting into June, close to summer, and if you were to push it further into July, that's the most popular month for everybody to travel because it's right in the center of the summer, school's completely out. So there was some time sensitivity. It is something that we talked about when we ran in 2020, was that we needed to a new strategic plan because the previous generations of the board had let it expire. And so I think it was very important, and the fact that we had very, very good turnouts, I think we did reach a lot of residents, and I'm hopeful for a good plan, which will also transition and not wrap up until after the election in case there's any movement on the board. Thank you.
Mr. Untalkley?
I'm more concerned about what do we expect from the strategic plan. When we have a charter for the township, we have responsibilities from a legal standpoint to the residents already. And how does spending that money improve our services and operations? Especially during the last meeting where the consultants were providing information, they were talking about emotional results and how you felt about things. Well, we're a service provider, and we have to spend fees in exchange for services, and we provide, that's operational. So how does that tie in and emotional reasons to providing a better strategic plan for the township? It doesn't. So my concern is more the direction than whether or not it's being hurried, and if the direction is poor, we end up with poor results. Thank you.
Mr. Kolinsky?
So the question is, do I think the strategic plan was rushed? There are parts of strategic plan that I wish we had an opportunity to spend more time on. We do, as trustees, have opportunities to talk with some of these consultants one-on-one and have opportunities to influence some of the outcomes of what they're looking at. And in some of those meetings, because of the timeframes that they were trying to get to, to make sure we got before the summer rush, I wish we did have more time at those meetings. That being said, when we had our strategic plan as a board in August, the results were phenomenal. I disagree with some of the things said about it being emotional. This is what the residents are trying to tell us. They are telling us the plan that they want us to focus on. They're asking us where to invest their money, and they're doing it as a broad picture. And we get to take that information and then make strategic investments based on what they're saying. That is a good plan. That is how boards are able to utilize this information to make the investments for them. Thank you.
Mr. Grigorov? Water rates will be revised when new meters are installed. Why do new meters need to be installed before rates are changed?
I can only offer a guess. If we revise the rates, we need a uniform metric, a very specific baseline from which we make sure that the rates are calculated fairly for everyone. In order for that to happen, everyone needs to have the same measuring device. That would be my explanation. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
So there's some confusion on this with the water and the water meters. Everyone isn't getting a new water meter. Water meters age out in about 15 to 20 years, and so, and as they age out, they run slower, and so it's not accurately reporting how much usage, which costs everybody else money if 10% of the people have old meters and they're not recording what they're using. So the meters are only being replaced in sections as age-related. What they are replacing across the whole township is the sending unit, the cell signal, which is different than having an employee have to drive down every street of the subdivision every three months to get your water usage. So this way, it'll be instantaneous. It'll be, you'll get a monthly bill. You'll see things where if you have a leak, you might not know for two or three months till you get that bill, whereas you're going to see it shorter term. Once everyone is on board with having that new sending unit that reports monthly, then we can look at a more usage-based system. But until every household has that sending unit, not necessarily a new meter, then we will have more data and be able to adjust rates again. Thank you.
Mr. Untalkley?
Can you repeat the question?
Water rates will be revised when new meters are all installed. Why do new meters need to be installed before the rates are changed?
Well, I think I already, as I stated prior, I did my own analysis. I published on the Better Bloomfield Township Facebook page that I believe the rates were too high. And I put a percentage amount of 8%. We have the new numbers out, and it's clear that, or at least unaudited numbers have been released in the July 22 meeting, and it's clear that the rates can come down. I also believe that spending $11 million that has I also believe that spending $11 million that has no payback or return on investment is a frivolous spend. I think if residents want additional services and want the ability to see that meter and see how much it's taking out four times a day, they should pay an additional fee to get that and pay for that as a separate service. Thank you.
And Mr. Kolinsky?
So similar to what trustee Murray had said, we are looking at installing these new meters and new sending units in order to capture the information so we can appropriately determine usage for all the township. We are doing it reactive versus proactive. We will be able to get information so much faster and more accurate so that we can determine usage-based rates, which is what residents have been asking for. So being able to get the information with the new meters or new sending units, we will then be able to calculate rates and know true usage and true purchasing of water in order to appropriately be able to deliver that service. So having the data to then redo rates is the reason we need these new meters and sending units to ensure we can do that as a township. That is why we need those new meters and sending units. Thank you.
And Mr. Garner?
I believe the new meters and sending units are essential to capture data for building accuracy. Thank you.
And to you, Ms. Murray. How would you address the issues, problems with trash pickup and snow removal?
Well, and the snow removal, we normally have incredible snow removal service. And there was a failing and a delay from the county. And I'm not personally involved in the daily operations, let alone the overnight emergency operations. I trust that our crews did the best they could with the situation that happened, although it was not our typical service. We normally have incredible snow service. You know, I've lived here since the 80s. And the snowplow would come down my street before the 6:30 school bus to pick my kid up. And that's why we had school. And West Bloomfield, which I'm right at the edge there, West Bloomfield sometimes didn't have the bus services come through because their snow removal is not the quality of what we have. And so that was one unfortunate situation. I don't see that as a regular problem. And in terms of the trash, GFL was an aging system, and we knew that. And we had researched other groups that had switched to priority. And although they said there was a learning curve with priority, they said, would they go back? No. And GFL has had horrendous problems. Priority bought a lot of GFL's trucks. Has priority been perfect? No. But in the big picture, I think we made the move in the right direction since GFL has lost more and more contracts. And we would have been behind the curve had we waited. And GFL wanted more money for less service, which was another issue because we did consider staying with them. But they wanted more money for less service. Thank you.
Mr. Antokli?
Can you repeat the question, please?
How would you address the issues, problems with trash pickup and snow removal?
Well, snow removal on the county roads, it gets more difficult. But I believe if you have a good relationship with the county and you know when they're facing problems, then the township, it's easier for them to react and adjust. And blizzards and snowstorms are horrible, and the icy conditions makes things worse. But we have to be proactive. We have to stay in contact with the county and make sure that the roads that the county is responsible for are going to be plowed in a timely manner. And then we can have an action plan if they don't. And then follow through to make sure that key roads are taken care of. Regarding priority, I think there's a lot of things at play with what happened with GFL. How much of it is related to inflation, rising gas costs? And you have an eight-year contract. And if you're stuck in those contracts and you can't make ends meet because of high inflation, what happens? We're now in a different situation. What I don't like about priority are their video cameras on their units.
Thank you. Mr. Kolinsky?
Yeah, so first, we'll talk about trash pickup. I was not on the board when we voted to go to priority. But from the information that I gathered, GFL was not willing to negotiate to the same level as some of the other bidders at that time, including priority, as well as we were going to be paying more and having less service under GFL. So hindsight is now 2020. If we would have gone with GFL in that contract, we would have still ended up with priority because priority bought out all of GFL's contracts. So in the end, we were able to get a better deal for the township residents and be able to leverage the fact that the CEO lives in our township. And we were one of the first townships to go with GFL, one of the bigger townships. So we were able to leverage that relationship to continue to ensure that we are taken care of while other townships continue to, townships, municipalities continue to suffer worse when it comes to trash pickup. For the snow plowing, Oakland County had a failure. There is a learning curve associated with new people at the county, as well as the new relationships that are being formed. We can continue to ensure that we work better with the county and eventually ask for forgiveness, not permission. And I will continue to support the administration to ensure that we adequately take care of our roads if the county is going to fail to. And I will make sure that our administration knows that I will back them if they continue to do work on the county roads because they're unable to service it. Thank you.
And Mr. Garner?
As it relates to the snow removal, I would suggest that we meet with the county, review the current process, validate it and verify that process is in place prior to any significant snowfall, just to make sure that they are on point as it relates to being able to significantly clear Bloomfield Township roads in a significant timeframe. As it relates to the snow removal, I'd also request that the township board members meet with priority officials and offer our concerns and request that those are addressed and that they offer corrections to the township. Thank you.
And Mr. Gagorov?
So as far as the trash pickup goes, even I, as a common resident, have heard that GFL were not an option. They were looking to get out of our residential trash pickup. So we could not go with them. As far as priority goes, I have also heard, I don't know whether or not it's anecdotal or not, that GFL has actually sabotaged the trucks that priority bought from them. So that is another mark on the GFL. So I believe that realistically, we have two options. We either subcontracted, or we do it ourselves. Doing it ourselves has not been on the table. It's something we can look into when the contract runs out. As far as the snow removal goes, I know that it's substandard for the small residential roads. And maybe there, we can subcontract some small businesses who specialize in cleaning the small residential roads specifically.
Thank you. To you, Mr. Antokli. What are your thoughts on the loss of population and how to address this issue?
When I grew up, I resided in West Bloomfield and then Bloomfield Hills. And I remember that the families were larger at that time. And when you have larger families, you have larger populations per home and per household. So I don't know how much of the population change here in Michigan is related to family size as opposed to other areas. We also have to consider the taxes that we pay here in the state of Michigan. And can we be more efficient at the local level, county level, and state level to improve the cost of living? I think by having a better accountability at the state level and county level, and even here in the township, we can lower costs and bring more businesses back to our area. Thanks.
Mr. Kolinsky?
So as a trustee, the focus on population is more about zoning and the focus on what the township residents want is when I think of loss of population in the township. The township population is kind of state stagnant, 42,000 to 44,000, depending on the census information. The residents have spoken in our strategic plan and all the times we've reached out to them. They do not want to change density or zoning within the township to allow smaller lots and cutting down our trees or congesting our roads. That has continued to have been a very strong voice to our residents. So in other communities, they can focus on changing density of areas to ensure that more people can be living in the area. And hopefully, you can reduce the cost per unit for builders and developers. At the township level, it's going to be hard to do that because we have not a ton of open green space in which we can develop. And we continue to hear from our residents that they do not want us to change density to allow more dense areas in the township. So if the residents continue to tell me that, I am not going to change density or zoning to allow more residents to the township at the board. Thank you.
Mr. Garner?
Can you repeat the question?
What are your thoughts on the loss of population and how to address this issue?
To address the issue of lost population, I believe that the township to attract more families to come into the district or the township, we need to maintain and/or increase the public safety. Also need to consider ways to keep taxes lower and affordable for home buyers. And also offer places for family to gather, like parks, more parks and recreations for families. So they are more inclined to want to come into Bloomfield Township and reside and stay in Bloomfield Township. Thank you.
Mr. Gagorov?
In terms of losing population, we're specifically talking about the younger adults not staying, right? People in their 20s and their 30s. What would be the root cause of that? We, for example, we offer excellent schools. This is a very strong point of the township. What we don't offer is more or less affordable housing. So this is something that we may want to look into and maybe designate an area for townhouses or condos. And maybe that will bring and allow us to retain more of the people in their 20s and their 30s. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
So the loss of population, as trustee Kolinsky said, it's not something that, as trustees, we typically work on. I know from the census in, I believe, 2010, it was 41,000, and now we're between 42,000 and 44,000. So in terms of overall numbers, we're not really shrinking. In terms of our age demographic, excuse me, our population is aging. And that's why the senior center is so important. But part of the reason is people are having fewer children. And we also don't want to create more dense housing. We don't have any more space really to build on. So the only thing would be in redevelopment if we wanted to, but I guess the residents don't really want it. But I mean, if we had a redevelopment in an area where it was suitable for more affordable housing or to try, which would bring in younger families. But our community, as it is, is, you know, very popular, and it is a little less affordable. I'd like to see, you know, more families being able to move in. I think recently in our own neighborhood, we've had a little increase. But in general, it is, we do have an aging population, which is why we need to cater to that and why we have the senior center to help people age and stay in their homes because that seems to be very desirable in Bloomfield Township. And I've been here almost 40 years, and I intend to stay here and age as well.
To you, Mr. Kolinsky. What are your views of the compensation plan?
Just writing the question down. Please don't take it as my time. So compensation plan. I am lucky enough to be on that committee where I get to work with some of our department heads and some of our union leaders, a part of that plan. The contracts were negotiated prior to COVID. I'm in public safety, and I understand wages have continued to, contracts have continued to get negotiated throughout our region that are becoming competitive. The loss of public safety employees, but general public employees have been huge. We have not been able to keep up with the wage growth that happened post-COVID. We needed to go to the compensation plan to look at not just what other communities are offering in terms of their wages and benefits. These are things that the administration, even myself, know a lot of the answers to. But looking at a third party, they can look at a bigger picture and provide information to us of different types of compensation, benefits, and plans that we may not know. In a recent meeting, we were talking with Dr. Russell, Russell Campbell, who happens to be the person who's in charge of our compensation plan. And we were going over different ideas. And we were able to brainstorm ideas that a lot of people in the room hadn't even come up with or heard of, that we were taking from the private sector and bringing in. This is going to make Bloomfield Township more competitive and bring the best public sector employees to the township, which is why I'm here and why I'm happy to be on that plan, on that committee. Thank you.
Mr. Garner?
Can you repeat the question, please?
What are your views of the compensation plan?
At this moment, I have no view on the compensation plan. That is not something that I have reviewed. That is not something that I am familiar with as I am not a member of the township board. Thank you.
Mr. Gagorov?
I have to echo Mr. Garner's sentiment. I know about the compensation plan only what I have heard here today. And as far as the strategy going forward, it all comes down to comparison. What do our neighbors pay to the police officers or to the firefighters? Are they able to retain the talent? Are they struggling the same way we are struggling? If there is an example that we can emulate, we should definitely do that. Thank you.
Ms. Murray?
So in 2020, before I was a board member, when I was running, the board at the time did a compensation study. And the study was in process. And then COVID happened in March of 2020, and the board negotiated six-year contracts right after the shutdown of COVID. And at the time, as a resident, I felt it was ill-advised to, one, make six-year contracts, especially as we were running into a pandemic with a lot of unknowns. But also, the compensation study wasn't out and available to use. So it seemed very backward that you started a compensation study and then did not seem to have it available, and yet you locked in six-year contracts. So much has changed with COVID. The availability of people, staying competitive is important. Retention is incredibly important to keep our high, especially our, not only our office staff, but our public safety staff and our fire, police and fire. So we want to be competitive and have retention. And with COVID, we've had a whole different turn on the environment and what's going on in hiring. So it's important to, any study from four years ago is useless. And this new compensation study, to look at other departments and other communities and make sure that we are competitive because we do want to retain our excellent public service.
Thank you. Mr. Antokli?
My number one concern on the compensation plan is we don't consider a revenue stream. And our revenue stream is tied to two things. Annual increases in property taxes and changing property taxes when people sell their homes. So I would like to see somehow something tied back to the valuations and something tied back to the annual increases. I also think we need to take into account our aging seniors. They're on fixed incomes, and Social Security does not always match up well with what we can increase in property taxes. So some years, like a year ago, we could go up 5%. But this year, Social Security went up 3.2, and we still went up 5%. Our seniors got hurt, but how do we justify a pay increase? Should it be tied back to Social Security and what our aging seniors are getting and what we can accurately obtain via revenue?
Thank you. And then our final question to you, Mr. Garner. What do you think are the township's two to three biggest challenges? And how would you address those?
Can you repeat the question one more time?
What do you think are the township's two to three biggest challenges are? And how would you address those?
The first challenge I believe the township has is, we've heard it quite a bit, water rates, concerns with water, and how would I address those? And again, meeting with the township, trying to implement initiatives to work with our seniors as far as assistance for water, for the, assistance to pay water, water bills, as well as continue to find ways to adjust the water rates and the efficiency of water billing. The, that is my main concern as far as the township. The second concern would probably, would more likely be dealing with, again, the strategic plan. It was mentioned, I heard it mentioned today, as far as it being rushed or whatever. But looking into that and figuring out ways to make sure that the overall vision, the overall goal for the township is not rushed, and it also provides a definite strategic blueprint, blueprint and strategy for the township. Those are my two concerns. Thank you.
Mr. Gogorov?
One of the few constants that we experience here in the township is that year after year, we will lose power, at least once or twice a year. This is pretty much a given. Sometimes it's, it's not a big deal. Sometimes it's catastrophic. And one of the, in fact, number one issue, when I, while I, why I'm even in the running for the trustee position, is to, to make sure that we prevent catastrophic situations where a thunderstorm, high winds, or a blizzard knock out our infrastructure as far as, for example, the streetlights, because that paralyzes the traffic and slows down the, slows down the recovery. And the second issue would be increase in property crime that comes as a result of online deliveries, and that is something that I would also like to tackle.
Ms. Murray?
So I think one of the biggest, most important things we can do right now is enable that strategic plan, because we had a strategic plan about ten years ago. It was allowed to expire, and I feel like that's partly what got us off track with some of the excessive spending. We weren't, our budgets weren't as much in check. In the years I've been on the board, I'm happy to report that we have made great progress and had surplus in our budgets. And you just need to have a good focus, look down the road and not just right in front of you. So I think the strategic plan is huge. Certainly, one of the things we hear from residents is the rising water rates. We're trying to address that with these new sending units and get a monthly read. I think we're on track with that. One of the things we recently talked about was the SADs are incredibly expensive, and although there is no other funding to take over for that, we're trying to look into some other creative ways for the people that are low income where it's making them risk losing their housing if there's some kind of grant or program or more creative loan that we can help people who are truly struggling affording those SADs. And also with our compensation study retaining the best staff. I mean, we are a people-oriented business. It's what we do. We have our service counter for our clerk, and we have our police and fire, and, you know, we're the pulse of running this community, and our people are, that's our primary responsibility, to provide the best people for the community.
Thank you. Mr. Antakly?
I believe we need to, there are two critical areas. Number one, water and sewer rates. And number two, looking at cash flow down the road and the impact of expected savings that we should see in the, regarding some pension issues. So first, we have a pension bond debt that's expiring. The last payment is in May of twenty thirty-three. That's a $5 million a year payment. So that's a significant boom. So should we lower millages and plan accordingly as we propose new millage structures going ten years forward? Or should we, and how do we address that? The other part is the actuarially determined contributions. Right now, they're a little over $5 million a year. Based on the current actuary, they'll go up to about 6.8 million, but within five years, they'll start decreasing. And as they decrease, that gives us more funds to use with other things. And how do we utilize those funds? And, or should we lower millages? So that's a very critical thing as we go forward. And I think on waters and sewer, it's clear that SACWA is overcharging us, and we can see that in statements on the SACWA website. In April 30th, 2023, in one of their documents, they stated that the municipal rates for members would, for water, would be nineteen dollars and eighteen cents per unit, while for Bloomfield Township, they stated it would be thirty-three dollars and eighty-six cents. But when you go to the budget, the cost to purchase water was twenty dollars and ninety-three cents. The cost to operate was a dollar seventy-three. That's inappropriate, and I think that's a way we can lower rates.
And Mr. Kolinsky?
So two to three of our biggest challenges. The first one is recruitment and retention of public sector talent. Second one is township infrastructure. There is a talent war out there for public sector employees. When we talk about public safety, where we're not able to find and recruit the best type of police officers, there are officers applying. They don't meet our rigorous standards, both character, values, morals, and ethics that we have in the township and that our residents ask for on a daily basis. We need to address our market of competitiveness, to say with wages and benefits, to ensure that we can capture the best public safety employees, but public sector employees want to come here. We need to do that with appropriate wages and appropriate benefits to get those best-in-class employees. That is the only way we're going to be able to get the best services in the region. Second one is township infrastructure. We have aging township infrastructure. We have fire stations that don't have adequate sleeping arrangements or bathrooms for female employees. That's unacceptable. We have areas in the township where we can't allow additional dispatchers because we don't have locker space for them. We need to invest in the infrastructure so we can get the best employees possible. We can do that with bonds falling off in the near future so we don't have to raise taxes. We can utilize the money that we're going to spend on bonds to invest in the township to provide them the type of service they want. Thank you so much.
That concludes the question and answer segment, and the candidates have one minute for closing statements. We will begin with Mr. Kolinsky.
Thank you. First, thank you guys so much for allowing me to be part of this event. This is amazing. Thank you so much. Thank you to everybody who has submitted questions. I do appreciate it. My experience, education, and values make me the best candidate for this job. My background in public safety, finance, process improvement, building, construction, and property development, and union negotiations are second to none. I have many diverse experiences that are extremely relevant to the issues that the board faces on a consistent basis. I am proud to be a township trustee here in Bloomfield, and I look forward to earning your trust and your vote in the upcoming election. Thank you so much for letting me be a part of this event. Thank you.
Mr. Antakly?
Marie, I thank you for monitoring the event. Want to thank the other individuals from the Women's League that have been here supporting our community and having this forum for us and opportunity to speak. I've been involved in the township more so in the past four years. I've been active in public comment. I have a different perspective, and I think it showed in how I approached different problems and solutions that were raised during this forum. I think bringing new perspective and new approaches to handling the same problems which have been here for a long time and in other communities would add value and hopefully provide better outcomes for the community. Thank you, and I hope you consider voting for me in November.
Ms. Murray?
Well, I want to thank the League of Women Voters because you did an amazing job. I did this in 2020 on Zoom, a lot tougher looking at the computer to talk to you guys. And I know this is more work, but I really do appreciate it and being able to be here in person this time, a different experience. So I ran for trustee in 2020. I never had any political aspirations, but I felt like I, living here for decades, the township was not going in the right direction, and I wanted to see a more resident-friendly and a more transparent government, and that was what I ran on. And I think with the change in the board in the past four years, I think we've made some incredible progress. I think we are more resident-friendly, definitely made more transparency and availability of documents, which was something residents were asking for. Have we made progress? Sure, we can always do better. There's always more to do. We've got our strategic plan. I love being a trustee. I would like another opportunity. I've put my four years in, learned a ton, and I can hit the ground running, and I look forward to being able to serve again. One of the unique changes that happened while I have been on this board was trustee Faqui and I wanted residents to be able to talk to a trustee sometimes to get some information. And so we created trustee office hours where once a month, you can come into the library, drop in basis, and a trustee will be there, and you can talk one-on-one and just a little bit more of a personal experience that you can have with your local government, and that's, that's been a really good program. So thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Mr. Gogorov?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here and inviting me here. If elected, I promise to work with everyone towards the common public good because ultimately this is our home, and we're all interested in making it better. Thank you.
And Mr. Garner?
First of all, let me thank the League of Women Voters for inviting me and having us here, putting on this forum. Really appreciate that. My vision for Bloomfield Township revolves around fostering togetherness, operating in what's best for the residents, and I'm committing to promoting initiatives that enhance our community's well-being and prosperity. I'm running for township trustee because I believe in Bloomfield Township and the opportunity to serve, lead, and contribute to the betterment of our community. Together, let's work towards building a stronger, more vibrant Bloomfield Township. Thank you again. My name is Oscar Garner.
The League of Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and the Bloomfield Community TV for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on these candidates, visit vote411.org for our voter guide. Rebroadcast of this forum will be on the League of Women Voters' website and YouTube. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to women and men over the age of sixteen. This presentation is copyrighted 2024 by the League of Women Voters and can only be shown in its entirety. All rights are reserved. Last of all, remember to vote on November 5th, and remember that democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you.